I'll get on that just two minutes ago.
Would you like to call the meeting of the Emmers and Trump's Department of Education to order, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free government of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go up, please, Mrs. Chifrida.
Mrs. Snyder, here. Mrs. Gillis, here. Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Yakubozzi.
Here.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Do I have a recommendation to adopt the agenda as presented, including any addendums?
So move, second.
Mr. Engel and Mrs. Gillis. Discussion. Go up, please.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozzi. Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
And I'm so excited that we get to have a good news report tonight. Do you have Mr. Teller joining us? Welcome.
Right.
Take it away.
Okay, well, good. Thank you for letting me be here. And I just want to start, I mean, there's so much uncertainty with COVID going on. I just wanted to take this time to say, you know, how is STEAL handling this? And exactly, you know, how are we handling this pandemic that obviously there's no playbook for? The best thing that happened, and I know Brian might jump in here and answer this with me, I think the best thing that we could say happened is the kids came to school on the 27th. Because up until then, what if this happens? What if this happens? You'll drive yourself nuts, you won't sleep. I mean, eventually, and maybe it's because I've been around so long, everything just kind of slows down when the kids come in the door. Everything becomes more normal. And yet, all the what ifs that you worried about never come to be, and things you didn't even know to worry about, that's what you should have been worrying about. So it's kind of interesting from that standpoint. But, you know, what change, you know, with changes come opportunities. And I'll just touch on a few things that seem pretty simple, that, you know, QR codes, we have technology. We used to always do hall passes, we used to do paper. Well, I mean, the Ohio Department, you know, everybody said, you know, limit your paper, limit all these things. So all of a sudden, we went paperless. We do QR codes to go to lunch, we do QR codes to go to the bathroom, to go to the office. Everything's timestamped. So our health department asked us to be very specific so you know, you know, from a contact tracing standpoint, so you know exactly where kids are in the building. I mean, it's perfect. And, you know, before, kids would just write on a sheet of paper, I left at 8:11 and I came back around 8:16, you never really knew. I mean, now we know exactly. God forbid, we do have a breakout. Who was in the bathroom? Who was in the office? Who was, you know, there or not? Pretty cool thing. Also, we have an entire building with planned time at the end of the day. And it's kind of a perfect storm. You'll never be able to get everybody in your building to have planned time at the same time, unless you go to two and a half hour classes and you change only once, you do all kinds of different things that we've done at the high school. But what that gives us, you know, in essence, we're doing, and we're not saying two and a half hours when we came up with that. And we didn't say that was the best practice. We said, in the middle of a pandemic, you know, only having kids change one time made perfect sense. So what this enables us to do now, I mean, basically, in a two and a half hour class period, basically, it's a 12-week trimester. So we have kids taking, in essence, three lessons in one day. And that's really, pretty much what it account, you know, equated to. So it was very important to make sure our pacing, to make sure we're hitting our standards and have that collaboration time. So that was an added bonus. And I don't think we'll ever see it again, but that was pretty cool. And just positive energy, I mean, our staff, our students, our parents, we're doing a lot of different things with them, and they're respecting everything. And I realize the sign out procedures are different, and, you know, my student's lunch might be at the end of the day. We're doing all kinds of different things, but we really appreciate that our parents have embraced this. And I don't want to jinx us, but our discipline, very, I mean, it's slim to none. And really, that's a credit to our veteran teachers. When do you typically get issues? Is those transition times. Before school, after school, you're changing six or seven times during the day. On lunches, we go on to five lunch periods and actually put them in two different locations. So, you know, some people call it a ghost town, but when you're in a pandemic, I love the way our lunches look because they look safe. So, that's another benefit. Homecoming, you know, we talk about, we're in Spirit Week now, and we talk about all the things we can't do. You know, we know we can't have a parade, we know we can't have a dance, but let's focus on the things we can do. So our student council got together and said, can we still have a Spirit Week? Of course we can. So I didn't go in PJs today, but I will, I'll be in a Hawaiian, I'll be in a Hawaiian shirt tomorrow. And if anybody wants to virtually do this, that's why I shared that with you guys. So we have a Country Western Day, a Neon Day, and then a Formal Friday. And we're not going to do all the ceremonial, where last year's King and Queen, hands off to this year's King and Queen, but we still did a Google survey, and we're still going to be able to announce a King and Queen. So we're going to do that at the football game right before that. Again, just an example of finding what we can do in the middle of a pandemic, instead of, you know, dwelling on, well, we can't do this, we can't do that. So, really interesting here, too. You know, we've had outside science labs, I know Rob Platts has said, not the two and a half hours. There's a naturalist over at Beaver Creek, I can take my biology class there, and there's presentations, so there's options there. A lot of outside reading circles, if you come by, you'll see, you know, I joke and say it looks like a Dead Poets Society, but you'll just have kids in a circle reading, pretty cool. Interesting thing here, Tony Trunzo, this is, so our art class, this is an e-campus. He thought, how am I going to do art? E-camps. So what he did, he called it a, I want to make sure I get this right, a mobile Zoom class. And what he's doing is going into Overland, and he's going to Frank Lloyd Wright's house in this architect, and kids are asking questions, and they're getting tours right there. He said, this is going so well, he said, I actually feel bad for my on-campus art students because my e-campus, they're getting these, you know, awesome experiences. And he has a meeting set up with Mike Sekulcar, and all kinds of things he wouldn't have done had we not been in this situation. So again, in our band choir orchestra, as you can see, they're not next to each other. I mean, they have masks, singing with masks. Is it best? No. Is it muffled? Yes. But again, taking what we can do and making it happen. So it looks really different, but we're pretty proud of everything that's been going on. I think our faculty and our students have embraced this. Some other things just going on, extensions of the classroom. We have a, we have Michael Hughes, a national merit semifinalist, which is a big deal. Every year, it starts with 1.6 million students. He is a semifinalist, so he is already one of 16,000 students. And, you know, what does that get you? If you become a finalist, colleges will give thousands of dollars, that's something you can put on your resume, your college application. And a lot of colleges will say, you know, we'll give you more money because you have this distinction. So that's a pretty big deal, we're pretty proud of him. Our theater, we've been meeting with our directors, we know that's going to be different. But again, how can we get that to work? We might have to video it, we might not be able to have an audience like we normally can. Our directors are already talking about maybe doing a theater with less characters and more spread apart with masks. Again, it's going to be different, but kind of making it what we have. PBIS is another, this is an interesting one. A lot of people think of that as, you know, your younger grades do this, positive behaviors. But at the high school, we started this last year. And this year, our committee got back together and said, okay, how can we, how can we reward positive behaviors? And we came up with a positive referral. So how that looks, unfortunately, I don't get to be part of this, but Ashley Harrigan and Nick Tony do, they will get a, they will get a referral from a teacher. So Brian Rabinski says, as an example, boy, this student's just crushing at my class, they're doing all these things, setting up, you know, just being a great example of what we want students at STEAL to be. So the assistant principal calls them down, they think they're in trouble, they get on the phone with a parent. And I'll just give you an example, and I told this girl I would not use her name, but this is something that Mrs. Webb, one of our DLA teachers did. So, Mrs. Webb wrote, "Over the past three weeks, Madison has demonstrated numerous positive behaviors." And this is what she's reading to the parents without the student even knowing. First, she is kind and respectful to myself and her fellow classmates. Not only does Madison follow all the classroom rules, but she more importantly respects the opinions of other students and approaches content matter with a mature attitude. Secondly, Madison's engaged during class discussions and other classroom activities. Madison is attentive, on task, and uses her time appropriately. Madison takes pride in completing assignments on time and always does her best." And this is probably the best, the last sentence. "Having Madison in class pushes me to be a better educator." Now, you're the mom or dad who just heard that, right? The kid's sitting there and all, I mean, sometimes there's tears of joy, I hear it through the walls, but I don't get to do it. And they give them a candy bar, and they mail that home to their parent, and at the end of the trimester, we don't know what it is yet, but they're going to be in a raffle for a big prize. So that's just some of the things we're doing there. So I just wanted to share that. Yeah. I'll close with saying this, you know, obviously, in 25 years, I've never seen anything like this. I mean, as a teacher, as a coach, as a chaperone, as an administrator, unprecedented, to say the least. We have a faculty who's embraced teaching for two and a half hours at a time. Parents are coming to school, like I said, respecting our new normal, we have all kinds of new guidelines. We have cafeteria staff, because some kids are eating later in the day. So just had a meeting with our cafeteria staff, and they might be taking actually a food cart around to certain classes. So the future's unknown, but I guess I'll just close in saying, I mean, there's kinks in the road, but I, I mean, as a principal of STEAL, I can't be more proud of our students, our faculty, of everybody. I think it's brought us closer, as weird as that is, that there's kind of something bigger going on than, you know, some things that we thought might have been big deals. It's amazing how we're putting things in perspective, and lots of great things going on at STEAL, so, thank you. That concludes my good news report.
Do you think we have any questions? Move to your time.
Or head off to soccer.
Joe, with winter coming up, how's that going to change with some of the outdoor things you guys are doing?
Sure, I mean, it'll, you know, we won't be able to go out as much, but... I think some of it, you know, I think some of it is, and every day, I know when I first came back, I was pretty nervous, you know, and I better win, I better do this, and I'm still pretty careful. But, but no doubt, I'm more relaxed now than I was even a month and a half ago when I first came back. So I think some of it, we're blessed with nice weather. I think you're going to see the staff as a whole, kind of, I mean, I think every day that we do this, we get a little more comfortable with what we have. So outside might not always be an option, maybe it still is, but I don't know that we'll need that, maybe like we did three weeks ago.
Anybody else? Right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'm off to soccer.
Do you have anybody who wanted to comment on the calendar or speak to us?
I've been on the way around.
So move on to the Treasury Report.
This evening, I will keep it brief. Board, I did want to let you know that I gave you the revenues and expenditures per month-to-date fiscal-to-date. Positive variances are highlighted and green. I did provide an update via email, did anybody have any questions about that? Just to note, we were probably at our high point for general fund cash for probably the next four months at least. We will begin receiving advance, real estate advances again in March. As far as the items that I have for the board to approve tonight, larger agenda than normal, I will talk to you really only about item 9D. And, excuse me, but I made a mistake on the exhibit numbers. In item 9C, we indicated that the exhibits were 8A, 8B, and 8D. They should all be 9A, B, and C, I'm sorry. And then Exhibit 9D, which I gave you, where the appropriations for fiscal '21 are highlighted in yellow, this is very, very similar to what the board passed the end of June for temporary appropriations. There were a few changes and a few additions. The new funds that the board is approving this evening are Fund 467, which is a small high school that works grant, it's a state grant, $3,000. That's actually tied in with the Making Middle Grades Work, and that is, that is a grant that Mr. Molnar aided Andrew Gibson at the junior high to apply for, it's a $3,000 grant for the year. Item, or fund rather, 499 is the state school bus purchase program for 43,000, excuse me, 40,300 and change. You'll see that referred to later on in the agenda. That is one of the funds that is being used to purchase a new bus for the district. And then Fund 510, this is another stimulus-type fund. It is the Coronavirus Relief Fund, federal fund for 163,000 and change. That also has a transportation component to it, 28,503, actually, that is being also put toward the new bus purchase. And then the Fund 551, Title III, is English Language Learners, that is increasing 205 over temporary appropriations. And the next one down, 572, which is Title I. I saw that there is a new arm of that, that's $7,400 grant, but it's broken apart from our regular Title A, Title 1A, and that is an additional $7,400 and change. Are there any questions about permanent appropriations? No. And then really, everything else on the agenda was self-explanatory, and I did provide an update, so were there any questions?
No. Hey, hearing now, I'll take a motion for the Treasury Recommendation 9A through 9H. Anybody have any comments or questions? Very none, thank you. Go up.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozzi.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa. And Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
Move on to the Superintendent's Report, Mr. Snyder.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Snyder. And I just wanted to provide a quick summary or overview of our opening, and just to build on some of the things that Joe had mentioned in his report, not just at the high school, but throughout the district, things have went very, very well. And as Joe mentioned, what we're, what we're trying to focus on is not what we can't do, but what we can do. And so as a result of that, you're seeing a lot of very creative things, and Joe had mentioned, you know, classrooms going outside, doing some different kinds of lessons, and I know we've talked at the board office, it's so neat there on the junior high Powers campus, to see so many students outside throughout the school, the school day, whether it be on the playground, or groups of students that are gathering alongside a building, or in a parking lot, wherever it may be. But teachers are getting very creative and taking advantage of the nice weather, and it's, it's gone very, very well. And especially when you consider that everybody's, we had a meeting today in a central office, this is one of those years where everyone's job looks a little bit different. It doesn't matter whether you're driving a bus, whether you're a secretary, working in food service, teacher, administrator, regardless of the position or the role that you're playing, the job looks different this year. And so folks have adjusted, they've adapted, everybody's kind of pitched in and taken the approach that, you know, we have to do what it takes to get the job done. So things have, as I mentioned, gone very, very well. One thing I did also want to mention, too, is a real shout out to Casey Wolf and his team of coaches, and not just here in Amherst, but across the Southwest Conference. You're aware of the guidelines and the things that we have to follow as far as athletic events, and facilities, and ticketing, and all the different things that have to be followed. And it has just went flawlessly for the first, you know, few weeks of the season, and we've kind of bumped up the senior nights to the beginning of the season, again, not knowing the uncertainty of what the end of the season might be like. So again, just everything very, very well. One thing I did want to mention, partly our biggest challenge, and I'll be the first one to admit, I was, I miscalculated. We had done a survey as far as transportation and the numbers of students that we thought would be riding buses, and our numbers of students riding buses far exceeded what we projected. And we were just, we were pleasantly surprised that so many students were wanting to ride the buses, and we had a few days there at the beginning of the year, we kind of got ourselves on track, and then a few days after the beginning of the school year, we had the kindergarteners join us, and of course, there's more bus riders. So we are to the point now where we've really, I think Tia has done a great job of kind of settled into a routine. I know she's balanced some of the routes and moved some students from some of the more crowded buses to other routes where they had fewer students, done a really good job of balancing those out. We did have, and still have, a shortage of substitute bus drivers, as many districts do. And I wanted to point out, and again, it's an item on the agenda, but Vermillion, working with Phil Peppin and the folks at Vermillion, very, very appreciative of their help. They helped us with their remote for the first, I think it's maybe nine weeks of the school year, so their drivers are not transporting students like ours are. So we worked out an arrangement with Vermillion, we're one of their drivers, and they can fill in for us, and it's just worked out very, very well. So a lot of things have come together in a very nice way, not just on campus, but with our e-campus. And I know Mike's going to talk a little bit about that as part of his report, and for example, we just, as I understand it, just worked out a way to do pictures for e-campus. Obviously, our e-campus students, you know, they want to do the pictures and those kinds of things, just like our on-campus. So our principals and Mike have worked out a really nice arrangement to be able to, again, make sure as much as possible, you know, we can give the kids and their families, you know, the opportunities that they need and deserve this year. So with that, that completes my report.
Thank you. I will move on to Mr. Molnar.
Oh, okay. I want to start off with the first feel-good kind of item. If you remember, a few years ago, we added a military families page to our website to support military families in our community. I got an email the other day from a parent whose son, a 16-year-old son is looking to go into military, and with some information on our website, he's kind of narrowed down with going into the Navy. And she was just sharing what a blessing it was to have that information, have those links there for her and her son to look some things up and do this research. She also shared with me a couple other things that I might add to our website, which I did, which would be beneficial to other military families as well. And the reason I just wanted to bring it up is because, you know, after Gators, I kind of realized, I get these probably like once a month or every couple of weeks, and most of the time, like this parent's not from our community. So, you know, not sure how many people see this, or why people come to our military families webpage, but I just think it's a good thing to help our military families and, you know, help anyone in our, in our community or anywhere. I just think it's a really, really cool thing. So, I was passing around, want to take a little bit of emails, a very nice email from a great mother and obviously a great kid. Second thing I wanted to mention is, as we're now beginning the school year, we have fall or beginning of the year testing. So every year, we administer math testing and reading and math for our kids in the eighth grade students. Usually, it's done on campus, obviously, and it's done in a math reading classroom. Parents are aware of it, when they get the information home about the results, but, you know, aren't too familiar with the process and all the procedures and what we do every year. Actually, three times a year, the fall, winter, and spring. The fall's so important because it's the baseline of the year, where are the kids at, where do we need to move them along during the year. It's especially important this year because in spring, you know, we had kind of the COVID shutdown, so we really need to know where students are at. Well, it also poses a little bit of difficulty this year because we have our e-campus students at home, and normally, it's a, it's an in-person, proctor kind of testing situation. So I wanted the board to know this afternoon, we sent home a communication to the parents, a letter that really, for our e-campus parents, just offers both situations. To possibly come on campus, kind of like school pictures, if they so choose to bring their kids on campus. Again, it's a more effective environment for testing, we can help with troubleshooting, it's online, in case parents might have difficulty. It is going to be difficult to do testing virtually and communicate and troubleshoot while they're administering, actually listening to the test, you know, through headphones. So it will be difficult. We have that option. So what I wanted to share with the board is, we have an option for both. Just like they had e-camps on campus, our goal is to provide options for families, give them every opportunity that they want and deserve. With that being said, I did see, because it kind of went on social media this morning before our information went out, that some people were concerned about the details, how it's going to work, or why we would want e-campus students to come on campus. And so I tried to answer a lot of emails today. And I just want to share with everyone, obviously, if there's a question or concern, email, calling is also awesome, please call, so we can answer any questions or concerns. But again, the reason we have for that opportunity, in fact, my first email I got recently was from a parent asking if they could bring both the sixth and eighth grader, two, on campus through testing. So again, whatever option you choose is fine, we're not trying to force you one way or the other, we just want to do what's best for everyone. And some e-campus families would prefer the district to handle testing and do it on campus, because it's comfortable with our safety protocols and how that might happen, just like they might come in for our school visits. So again, just want to encourage the community, please call, email, ask questions, we'd love to answer them and help you out as much as possible. And I just would not recommend going to social media for your answers, if I can share that, but we'd be happy to help at any time. So with that being said, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. Mrs. Walker.
My turn. So, speaking of helping and speaking of community, you know, we've got so many amazing things going on here in the district, but our outreach isn't stopping there. And so I just wanted to share with the board that our district social worker, Jill Maorca, has been updating her website, which parents and students and community members can access from our district's webpage under the Parents and Students tab. And on there, she has two links right now that she's out, she's seeking requests for school supplies. If parents are in need of school supplies, or if you know of anyone who might be in need of school supplies, we've got lots of donations coming in, that she will reach out to families and she's going to work on getting those coordinated. The other thing that she's been working with, Doug Cogdell, our tech supervisor on mobile hotspots for families, so that we can make sure that our e-campus families all have access. We have a few families right now who have been renting them from the library, and the library has been very generous with that, but it's not always guaranteed that they're able to renew. And so if we can get these mobile hotspots to the families that need them, then we can ensure that they can have continued access to their e-campus learning. And the other thing is that we're still working, we're working on coordinating another event with Second Harvest. We're not exactly sure what that's going to look like as yet, whether it's going to be as big and involved as the Mobile Food Pantry we had in July. It might just be more local, we might do some small distribution sites, but those types of outreach and those types of communities and community activities are still happening, even among all of these things. So she's been doing a great job, and we're really happy to have her. And that completes my report. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Engel.
Um, I don't really have a whole lot to report. I mean, the JBS is back in session, you know, there's your HyperTech thing, and we haven't gotten an update as to how all that has played out in the first few days of school, and the board meeting is not until Thursday, so I don't have any specific information to share with you. If you have some questions, I'd be glad to try to... If you have some questions, I'd be glad to try to get an answer for them. I don't know the answer right now, but I will know a whole lot more after Thursday.
What's the update on the levy that the JBS is trying? Did you vote?
We did vote, yes. I didn't, yeah. That is on the ballot, and you should be seeing stuff soon. We have got some communication about that, but that is going forward, and I know that some people are talking about it at different locations. I guess that is the report.
Okay. Any other reports? Mr. Sanders?
No, good sir.
Okay. So we'll move on then with the personnel recommendations.
Thank you very much. I hope the board has had an opportunity to review the agenda and various items. Most of the personnel recommendations are fairly standard and typical for this time of year. I did want to highlight item E. I alluded to it briefly previously. This is a recommendation to increase our substitute bus driver rate to $22 an hour. Again, we're trying to expand our pool of bus drivers. It's very simply, Amy and I were talking today, it's supply and demand. There just is not, there's just not a big pool of drivers. So we're hoping that this will help us to attract more substitute drivers. And the reason we made it effective the 8th of September is because this is the arrangement that we've worked out with Vermillion. This is the rate that they will pay the bus drivers helping us out, and then they'll bill us for this amount. So again, that's why it's retroactive to September the 8th. I did want to just make mention of that. And with that, would like to recommend approval of items 12A through 12I.
Teresa and Mark, any? Any questions or comments?
Are we guaranteeing bus and substitute bus drivers have a minimum number of hours?
No, there's not. It would be on an as-needed basis.
On actual hours.
Yeah, as-needed basis, that's correct.
Any other questions or comments? None, will call please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Educational recommendations, Mr. Sanders?
Yes, just four items here, a couple of these items relate to providing services for students with special needs. And I did want to draw attention to the first item, which is an amendment to our nursing contract, which essentially what this does is basically for this school year, will provide us with almost a full-time nurse in each of our four buildings. Typically, we don't have that. We have some sharing that takes place, but obviously, we're in a unique situation with the pandemic. And after talking with our principals and working with the health department, we felt that this adjustment was needed and appropriate for this school year. And again, that's the rationale behind this recommendation. With that, would like to recommend approval of items 13A through 13D. If I may say something. Can I say C will be separate?
Yes, certainly. So we're looking for recommendation for 13A, B, and D.
So move.
Discussion? Will call please.
Just one more, please.
Sure.
The motion was Mr. Yakubozie?
Yes.
And second was Mrs. Gillis?
Correct.
And C will be separate. Making the math.
That's okay.
All right. Do it.
I'm ready to roll.
Yeah. Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mr. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye. Now I'll take a motion for 13C. Second. Discussion? Will call please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel? Mr. Yakubozie?
Mr. Stane.
Mr. Zappa? And Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Move on to business recommendations, Mr. Sanders?
Yes, thank you. Again, just three items here. And again, the agenda's a little bit lighter than usual, thanks in part to the special meeting that we were able to have. I think it was maybe the day before school started, we were able to wrap up a lot of items and contracts and personnel things at that meeting. So again, thank you for your help with that. But we do have three items here. The first one, as I mentioned previously, item to authorize Amy and I to enter into an agreement with Vermillion for substitute bus drivers. Item B is a transportation for a special needs student. And then item C, this is an item that originally we were not planning on purchasing a bus this fall, but things kind of came together, if you will. We knew that we had $40,000 from a state grant that was available to us, and then we recently received some additional CARES Act funding. And after doing some investigation, we discovered that a portion of that has to be earmarked specifically for transportation. If I remember, it's just about $28,000.
$503.
So Amy's got it down to the penny. So it really kind of, as Amy and I and Tia talked about this, it really kind of made sense because we had basically $68,000 already pledged towards, you know, a new bus without dipping into district funds. So by contributing another $23,000 from our permanent improvement fund, we're able to purchase a new bus. So we just thought it made sense, given the dollars that were available to us from these other sources. So again, just wanted you to have a background on that, and would like to recommend approval of items 14A through 14C.
So that could. Discussion?
How many, how many of your buses do we have in this?
This would be, I believe, 11 in the last two and a half years, I think. I think we did three, three, and then I want to say we did four in March, and then this one, I believe this will put us at 11 in the last two and a half years.
I should probably know this already, how many buses rule each day?
Oh, each day. Actual routes, I want to say about 25, I think, as far as actual, you know, routes, as far as picking up students here in Amherst. Now, we have some other routes that for transportation out of county, for example, or to the JBS, for example, but as far as actual routes here in Amherst, I think we're running around 25. And we always have spares that are available for various trips. Now, this year, we only have field trips that we typically have during the day, going to different places, but we typically have spares available for those purposes as well.
Anything else? Will call please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
We would like to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment of a public employee with no action to be taken. Second. Discussion? Will call please.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.